All right.
Oh, we at 8.6?
I think we are.
All right. Salary schedule provisions.
All right, this document's fairly straightforward and hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. It just governs how placement on the schedule, how previous experience is dealt with, graduate credits, how to move across, for instance, from bachelors to bachelors plus fourteen, or sixteen, I'm sorry, et cetera. Do you have any questions about this item?
Is this the same that we've seen before?
The only difference, I believe, is under number four. Previously, there were two, there was a spring, or a fall and a spring date, I believe. They were August 15th and January 15th. The second one has been removed and we put a priority deadline of August 15th in there. If we have that information by August 15th, we can process it for the August 20th payroll so they would get 12 equal increments, but we would still accept it up to September 15th. If a teacher takes a class, it gets over late in July, it might be hard for them to get the transcript by August 15th, but certainly by September 15th, we believe they'd be available.
And so, we're taking off that second?
Yes.
Date where they could, like if they took a, like a fall semester and then that bumped them up over, then they cannot get the bump in pay for that second semester of that school year, correct?
That's the way this would work, yes.
Yeah, I remember a discussion about, from Amy, saying that would make this a much more streamlined procedure.
That's how the school districts are.
It's pretty typical, yeah. It's pretty typical.
So, I make a motion that we accept the administrative recommendation.
Second, Mr. Green.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Atley?
Yes.
Ms. Christman?
Yes.
Yes. 8.7, speech-language pathologist salary schedule.
Yes, you saw this last time and we figured out that we had one person who's been grandfathered, or maybe it's great-grandfathered, I'm not sure, into this particular occupation. Now, anyone who becomes an SLP at this point in time has to have a minimum of a master's. So, anybody that comes in new will be at master's or master's plus 16, something to the right of that. We do have the one employee that we created the new schedule for, the two lines, the bachelors and the bachelors plus 16, and then whenever that employee resigns or retires, those two columns will disappear.
She needs her master's first.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
This is to encourage the extra learning, right?
Well, yes, and just because we didn't have, since that person does not have a master's, we were paying them at a master's level, we didn't feel like that was equitable. So, yes, if he or she were to gain more hours, then we would move him to the right.
Okay.
But this has become a requirement to be an SLP for our district's master's degree.
Well, anywhere, they can't get a license without the master's.
Right, that's a new thing, yeah. All right, well, I move that we approve the speech-language pathologist salary schedule with the two columns added.
We have a first and a second? Ms. Chris Sullivan?
Sneeden?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Atley?
Yes.
Ms. Christman?
Yes.
Next is ROTC salaries.
Yes, and this is the information that we were given every year. Obviously, there's a, the Army reimburses for a certain percentage of the ROTC salaries and the school district picks up the remainder, and what you see there is our recommendation for next school year, 16, 17 school year.
And this is including the, because we shortened their timeframe?
Yes, they went from 12-month to 10-month.
And so, the Army adjusted what they will be reimbursing, correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me how much, what was the cost savings for the district by, with the cut?
I can't tell you that, but I'm hopeful that Wes can.
It was around 45,000, between 40 and 45,000.
Forty, 40 or 45,000?
Sorry, between 40 and 45,000. And we did remove the travel stipend from their, from their pay scale this year. That was included before. Last year, they did have travel still. That was another change.
What was the travel last year?
I don't, I can't remember. I'd have to go back, I think it was...
Is anybody here?
You remember Sandy? I can't remember. Was it 800 bucks, 900 bucks?
So, they'll just get reimbursed like everyone?
They'll get reimbursed for their mileage like everybody else. Last year, the schedule was approved with that in there, so we paid it that way because that's what was approved.
Okay. Well, I move that we accept the new ROTC salary schedule for 16, 17.
I'll second.
Ms. Chris Sullivan?
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Ms. Stanford?
Yes.
Ms. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Atley?
Yes.
Ms. Christman?
Yes.
Yes. Assistant superintendent recommendations and determinations. Mr. Superintendent, go right ahead, sir.
Basically, we have addressed this since August of last year when we were talking about organizational structure, and brought forth various, you know, proposals particularly here since January. You're at a point in time here where really if the decision on any associate superintendent position is not made, you're going to have to step back and wait a year. You still have a window of opportunity to put a search out and, I think, still get a quality candidate and hire. My recommendation is to break this out into two associate positions, one of academic responsibilities and one of non-academic responsibilities. I was asked last month, or last meeting, to address the impact on students and student achievement, and we've listed there many items, and the impact is on focused leadership directly impacting staff and students' and performance. Study after study shows that, from Marzano to Bowman and Deal, there is a direct impact on student achievement with focused leadership at the central office level. And I guess that's what I'm really after, is moving the district to where the details that we're in right now get addressed, both on the academic and non-academic side, as well as the HR and the finance side. Currently, right now, I would not, I would keep that piece the same. I think someday, you need to take a look at a direct associate over business services, but I'm not seeking that at this time. Minimally, I think you need to do an academic at this time. Ideally, you're looking at two, I think would get you set for the next, with the organizational structure that's been proposed, that would set you for the next decade or better, not knowing what your ultimate student enrollment will be. It's not out of line per DESI standards, and in fact, we're underneath that, we're not, we're very broad right now. We're trying to streamline this so that we can get focused academics uniting, and I think that's a key. It's the unification of these departments, buildings, and grade levels that focused leadership will supply. And again, it's like any other hire. You've got to get the right person, you've got to get the right team together, and I believe we're working on that very diligently with quality people in many aspects, up and down the board in our hiring process. But my recommendation is to approve these job descriptions tonight. For the two associates, I am recommending those be brought in at step 50 on the minimum, which is 130,000 on the 16, 17 administrators' schedule, is where that would fall. If you look at the compensation wage studies, schools are size as well, the range there would be basically 130, 140, 150 tops.
Does that include benefits, or is that just the salary?
That would be just salary. Basically, it would apply 25% on that towards benefits.
Okay, I guess I'm going to speak to this first. When I saw this back a few months ago, when cuts were being made here and there, I said no. And then, I looked at it, and really what Dr. Newhart is saying is, we need to unify. And the only way I see we're going to unify elementary and secondary and assessment, and those directors and their departments, all the way down to the classroom teacher, which then again affects performance of the student, is to bring in most definitely an academic assistant superintendent. And my heart says, oh, I hate to spend that kind of money, considering the cuts we've made, but my head says it's the right thing to do. And at the same time, I think it's appropriate to bring in a non-academic operation person, assistant superintendent, for the same reasons, dealing with the non-academic side, hopefully to unify those departments, help them work together, because that's what we're lacking. Also, to me, it adds a layer of accountability, and it takes away, not speaking of Dr. Newhart, but just that superintendent's position to begin with, that too much power and control, because I'm sure that person trying to answer to 12 different directors and answer questions for 12 different directors eventually decides to micromanage, because that would make that person's life a lot easier, just to make the decisions, and we don't, I don't think any of us want that. And I believe too, that the reason this old superintendent's council came together is maybe because that was a way to get all the directors together and visit, but I think we also want to make sure that we don't go back to what might be perceived as a, as what the superintendent's council was. So, I think for a lot of good reasons, and with moving forward, 21st century education and, you know, to better this school district, I would make the motion that we hire these two associate superintendents, and, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Green.
Is that an official motion?
That was an official motion.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
I don't have a second for that motion, but I would want to...
Discussion.
Talk to Wendy.
Motion dies in no second.
To piggyback off what Tammy was saying, is that eventually, I think both would be great. I think right now, with everything that we've done to the staff, I think the focus needs to be on the academic, and I think that that is completely justifiable, and I think it's well-needed. I think our main focus is educating children, so I think at this time, it would be more than appropriate to have the academic associate superintendent. So, I would make a motion to hire just the academic associate superintendent.
And I would second that.
We have a motion on the floor and a second.
With that job description associated, as presented, okay.
As presented, yeah.
With a vast emphasis on someone with experience in curriculum and instruction, because that isn't necessarily the required education or whatever, but curriculum instruction and assessment, I would hope.
We have a discussion? I have some discussion. I'm not, I'm not sold on the salary range. I think it's a little too high for where we're at now. I understand that we need the position, but like has been stated before, the financial situation, the things we're trying to accomplish, we're finding money for our entire staff, and to sink 130,000 into one person, I think it's a lot of money. And we're talking about 260 if we're, if we were to hire them both.
Motion just for one?
Just for one.
I understand that, I'm just, this is discussion. But still, we would be talking about 260 eventually. So, my heartburn is the 130, I believe is too high. I agree that we need the academic part, because we need to get back to emphasis on teaching and learning, but that's my two cents worth. The motion's on the floor. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I respect your thoughts on that price tag. I agree, I would support this motion. I think we're in a difficult climate right now in our district, where, you know, we're deficit spending, and so, any dollar we spend has to be a very wise dollar spent, and I think it has to go to the business of this district, which is student performance, academic performance. And so, I would be supportive of dollars spent towards an associate superintendent who functions with bringing a culture change to our academic culture here. I think this is our greatest need as a district, where we need to improve student performance, and we need somebody to bring more collaboration amongst teachers, administrative staff, our directors, focused on outcomes of students, and we have to stay focused on outcomes of students, those have to improve. And so, that job description would have to stay focused on that.
I think it does address the collaborative efforts and unification from kids, staff, buildings, grade levels, all the way up.
With this, with this proposal, we don't have a balanced budget yet, and so, this would be deficit spending. The public is going to have some concerns about that, and so, if we choose to go down this route, it has to be wise dollars spent. It has to have value, and my concern is, I don't have as great an amount of heartburn over the 130. I would have great heartburn over hiring somebody for 110, 115, who didn't meet our objectives. In other words, what I wouldn't want with this hire is to hire the best possible candidate to bring us forward, and so, I would, I would, I would like the idea of spending another 15, 20,000 for that 130 to get the highest. I wouldn't want to miss out on any candidates, because I would have greater heartburn spending 100, 120 for somebody who didn't fit what we really needed.
So, to piggyback on what you're saying, Doc, I have a little apprehension on this late in the game, being able to even attract the type of person that we really need for this district, because most of those people have signed contracts with other districts for the next school year. I mean, we're talking about the best and the brightest. So, actually, we could be just blowing in the wind here, we may not even find anybody that we like, and that's because the people that we need for our district, for the academic shortcomings that we all have recognized, that person may not even apply because they're not available now.
And if that's true, we should not spend the money.
Okay, Mr. Sneeden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I'd be a doctor if I had some patients. Anyway...
A good one, Dennis.
I just like to say, there's nobody here that wants to help Dr. Newhart more than I do. I've known him for years, way back when, but right now, we're trying to get our salaries on track. We got support staff, we haven't addressed that one yet. I'm glad we didn't get to it tonight, because we wouldn't be able to go home. I just think that timing is wrong, that the public is, especially when you say that word "administration" and more salaries, with benefits, you're talking 160, even with 130, with the benefits, Wes, how much is the benefits on 130,000?
It'd be about 160,000.
160 grand, times two, that's over 300,000.
The motion's for one, Dennis.
The motion's for one.
Pardon?
The motion's just for one, for the academic.
Oh, I know, but, but right now, to me, it's the wrong time. I think Dr. Newhart's just going to have to suck it up for another year, and let's find out what this, that's what I tell my weightlifter, suck it up, buttercup. Let's get on track here, let's don't panic the public, let's show everybody we're serious about getting the budget under control, but again, we're going to, we're going to pay people what they're worth, and not, and everybody.
The current, the current situation, what I, concerns me, and again, yeah, I'll survive one way or the other, or we'll go see Dr. Green. We are missing the detail and specifics of many items, and that in itself is costing you money and it's costing you time, where knowing where you want to go as a board and the time and energy necessary to get the things done, not only with the community, but with the directors and the principals and the staff, I can't even get out to see a building in the course of a day with my schedule and trying to answer the 10, 100 different things that everybody wants or needs, and that's what I question. Is it, you know, 160,000 to help you get where you want to go, in my opinion, that's why I wouldn't be recommending it, is dollars well-spent? You're at, still an opportunity, Martin, I believe, that, I guarantee you this, this is no disrespect to any prior board member or any superintendent, but I believe I was a June hire, and I was well worth the weight in gold as previous hires that you've had in this superintendent's position. It can be done, and I would like the opportunity to try to see it, and I'd be the first one to tell you, if there's no candidates out there, that you don't hire them.
That's my point. If the right candidate's not there...
But I think, I think there's good candidates out there that would jump at a chance to come in here and try to help the St. Joe School District.
I think it would be worth our time and efforts to try, to see what's out there. If the right person is not there, I don't want to hire somebody just because they're a warm body.
And we might also want to consider an interim-type thing. I know that didn't seem to work in your position, or so the board thought in fall of this year, but, you know, we might not get, that person that we hire ought to come in on an interim, because what if they're not the right person to change the culture? What if they aren't the vision of, and so, you know, that, we could do that too, because if we get someone late and they're not the quality, you know, it can just be an interim. It's a one-year, I'm assuming these associate superintendents would be a one-year hire?
It's a one-year contract.
Okay. All right, that answers it. You don't have to call it that, yeah. It's a one-year.
Yeah, I think that it, I think it's worth the effort and the time to put it out there, and we always have the right to say no, if we don't feel like the candidate is the correct person to be there. I think, I think that would be well worth our time and effort.
I just guess I worry because I've talked to so many people in the district, and this could be a morale builder, and that's been part of our problem, because no one feels connected, and I'm, and I'm talking about the academic side specifically, you know, people don't feel connected, that any one person is, you know, that they're not all working together, and we're just going to keep flopping along where we are, and we're not going to make any strides with our kids, performance-wise or academically, if we don't find that cohesion. And if it isn't in this associate superintendent, then we've got to come up with a plan amongst our directors and our administrators and our teachers and our peers on how we can connect, because you had even asked a question, Mr. President, about why can't you sit down and work together and, you know, assess my curriculum?
And so, also, we are, I know there's a motion on the floor, but also, we are replacing our secondary and our elementary directors, isn't that correct? And so, when you say that our staff feels disconnected, is that because that those people are missing, or we're getting ready to replace them? And we have 12 directors, this is where, that's where I'm at. We have 12 directors, how come those 12 directors can't come together until, you know, be cohesive?
We are working together. What they need many times, when you have issues or disagreements or misunderstandings, somebody has to take the leadership role to help get through those leadership areas and disagreements. I know Lori's been on many committees where that's happened. The directors can tell you numerous times that they are trying to work together and come up with answers, but to get to me, to my time as superintendent, and to get caught up to speed on all that, that's what the difficulty is, as you're bringing these items to the Board of Education. You know, I was willing to take this on, obviously, but also, I'm trying to get you as a school district and as a school board where you want to go, and ultimately, somewhere down along the line here, you're, again, if it's not tonight, you'll have to wait less than a year to readdress it, but you're going to have to address this, whether that's next year, two years, three years, whatever that is from now. You know, we cannot keep physically this up in any shape or form, and would probably have to cut back on, and maybe that's not a bad idea in itself, on the number of items and the speed that we've been actually operating under here this last year.
Mr. President, to answer your question, I think a lot of it has to do with the fact that we're losing two awesome people, our directors of elementary and secondary education. I'm sure that's some of the feeling of uneasiness, and nothing against Dr. Newhart, I don't even know Dr. Newhart's background educationally, but someone who's been in the classroom for 26 years and have a vast knowledge of curriculum instruction and assessment, and have worked at DESI on it, I want someone in here who has had that kind of experience to shape our academic program, and, you know, is Dr. Newhart the person, does he have that experience, or could we better have someone as an associate who has that?
And that's their focus.
And that's their focus, because you know what, maybe that isn't, Dr., maybe he doesn't have that background. Do you see what I'm saying?
I have a very...
And our, and our mission is to educate every kid successfully, and we're not going to do that unless we have in place leadership that understand, we have new standards that just were passed, and that's going to be a whole new ballgame. We're looking at new tests in a year, we're looking at adjusting standards, who knows what, that's going to move from grade level to grade level, we're looking at not just math and, and language arts and, and science, but now social studies and PE have been added back in. I mean, there's a huge task before us, just with the new Missouri standards, and I'm sure, am I, would you agree, directors of elementary and secondary and principals that are in here, we have a huge task, and we took away our professional development leaders, so who's going to do that training, who's going to go get it, and who's going to do it? You know, those were, are gone now due to the cut of instructional coaches, so we've got to figure that out. I mean, do you see the huge... I mean, do you see the huge need for a person who is specifically focused on academics? I do. I do, it's important.
I believe that focus needs to be, that's, that's our main goal, to educate children. So I think that this would be a step in the right direction to help everyone.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Can you reread, can you read the motion again, Ms. Consolvo?
The motion is to hire an academic superintendent, or, an academic, one academic superintendent. Associate superintendent, sorry. Associate superintendent or representative.
Okay, are there any more questions? And more discussion?
Mr. President, do we answer the question on salary? I mean, is that part of this motion, or is that a whole different discussion? If you're accepting the, the proposed job...
The motion is 130,000.
The 130, thank you, for clarifying.
As a job description, um, applies.
Any more discussion? Ms. Consolvo, take the vote.
No.
Mrs. Stanford?
No.
Mrs. Hodges?
No.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasley?
Yes.
Mrs. Crisman?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
I know that's a, um, difficult decision, I appreciate that. We will have, uh, a task here to do, to immediately get it advertised, and work on the hire. And see where that leads us.
And Dr. Newhart, I would encourage you, on that interview committee, to include some teachers, and, you know, maybe one from each of the organizations. I don't know how we normally, in this district, hire, if it's just, would be you, and, but maybe a board member, and, make that a vast committee.
We, we've looked at the committee format, both of the director hires, we've used, and would probably use a similar format, um, um, to some degree, with variance, with, with this hire.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda.
All right, the next item is the summer school staffing list. Right up front, I want to tell you that this is based on the assumption that the, the classes that are listed will fill. I mean, if, if there aren't enough kids, we won't run some of the classes. You see there the lists, the teachers, what they're compensated, and it goes through their number of pages. Are there any questions about the summer school list?
I have a question. If somebody only works, like, the first two weeks for the, those classes that are the bridge to middle school, or the bridge to high school, do they get paid the whole summer school salary, or do they get half of it? How do you...
Um, if you look on the first page, about two, three-fourths of the way down, you'll see some 961.99, or basically 962 dollars. That would be that situation where someone does half of the, half of the term, they would get half of the 1924, which is 962. Other questions?
When do we know how many of these teachers will actually need, when those classes have the adequate amount of students? Because we're gonna approve this, but if there aren't enough students who sign up for these classes, then we won't be paying those...
Correct, this, this would be a maximum.
This would be a maximum?
Yes.
What order are they in? They're not alphabetical, are they?
They're just a number.
I know, it's crazy how they're on there, I was trying to figure it out.
I, I don't have the answer for that.
No?
I don't know how that order was determined.
Like, number 97, it has 1924 plus 1924?
That person's doing both sessions.
Doing, okay.
We have an eight-week summer school.
Uh, some of the E S Y things are that long, the extended school year.
Is that just the high schools? Would you be extended?
Elementarys?
The extended? Is it extended for high school?
No, that would be for, for students on an I E P who have goals that they work on throughout the entire summer.
So that's K through 12?
It could, it... Is it eight weeks?
It's the same, unless, um, if the school D E determines otherwise, it is generally the same as regular summer school.
Okay.
Weight training also is eight weeks, I believe.
Is the weight training in here?
No.
No.
No, it's okay.
It's not a summer school course, fitness course?
No.
No, that's not allowed by DESI.
Fitness is.
No, it's been disapproved by DESI.
Fitness and lifetime sports is, uh, can...
They don't offer any of those for summer school? Okay. This list is just summer school?
That's correct.
336 teachers for summer school.
That's what's on the list.
This is the maximum, but it might not be all of them.
And this is, this is based on the numbers that attended summer school last year.
And what's the minimum that they have to have, in order to have a class?
It varies from class to class. Sandy, go ahead.
The increase in salary from 15 to 17 a school year. So that looks at the estimates that we will follow, we'll track attendance on a daily basis. And so, the first day, we'll track for the first couple of days, and if they don't have the enrollment, then they're going to go along a few times.
And the exception to the 15 to 17 would be, um, the ones that have our students on I E Ps would not be that large, obviously.
So what happens if you start out with a full class, and then three or four weeks into it, you drop off to below that minimum? Do we continue with those students? Or do we just say, "We're done"?
Sometimes those students are far out of the classes, uh, if they don't have enough to make, um, it's just on an aggregated basis, determination whether or not, um, they have enough students for it to make.
Okay, so, okay.
It'd be average, it may have to be in one day.
Does it work on an average?
Yes, uh, really, they've done a great job in the last several years, looking at class sizes, and making sure that they made, and if they don't have enough students, then that teacher is really just no longer teaching for us.
Okay.
So the number of teachers hired is based entirely on student demand?
Yes, so this would be all those teachers who have signed up, and, uh, based on how many show up, that, that list will probably be adjusted, I would say most definitely, depending on student enrollment.
So this is the maximum number of teachers we could have?
That 7:00 AM start's hard on a lot of kids, they stop coming after a little bit sometimes.
Well, you have vacations, and then you have other things that come up.
It's summer, I want to sleep in.
Do the teachers come up with the, um, theme, or what they're gonna teach? And so then they're very good at recruiting kids to come, and, um, that encourages attendance, um, yeah. So if they want to teach summer school, they're gonna make sure they pick a theme that is enticing to kids, and then they're gonna make sure that, uh, they get kids to attend, and it's pretty successful that way.
Well, for elementary school, yes.
Yeah.
The other ones are a little different.
What percentage of the cost of summer school is, do we anticipate is reimbursed by the state?
Good question.
You know the cost of summer school reimbursed.
This...
It's based on average daily attendance.
It just adds to our average daily attendance for the year.
You can break it out, uh, this summer school, 16, um, basically, will be ran just like summer school, um, 15 was. Then the all-in plan going into, uh, uh, 17, that's what we want to really look at for summer school 17, and consolidating that, to where we truly can get a 10% net, uh, difference on that summer school ADA. It's difficult to do that here for this summer school, under the, under the time and notices.
Yeah, currently, our summer school, we have to use local funds to supplement, because we don't get enough money from the state.
I'd like to see our summer school be a little longer, so some of these classes that kids have to make up are doable. In four weeks, you can't do an English class, you know?
And even potentially, um, consolidated, maybe throughout the elementaries, or longer day even, to mid-afternoon.
Yeah.
Those types of things, a lot of things that we can take a look at.
Okay. Take a motion to accept a personnel report?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Ms. Consolvo?
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasley?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Yes. Let's take a five-minute break, um, before we go into old business.
We have tonight Lori Nielsen, been sitting patiently back there. I believe they approved the entire personnel report.
We did, yes. Nope, we did, we did the whole personnel. I, I, I moved.
Yay, Chris.
I thought it was just for the summer school.
With J.W. Terrell, um, Lori, thank you for coming up tonight.
Thank you all for having me. I was hoping to bring some finality tonight, but instead, I'm bringing an update, it's, it's still good news. We have a medical, uh, update from Kansas City Blue Cross. We had asked them to extend the current contract with no change in fee structure, for an additional six months, to get us to a 7-1 effective date. They refused that request, they cited a compliance issue, and, um, we weren't all that surprised. But, it was a stretch for us to ask, but, but we wanted to ask anyway. What they did offer were a couple of different options. They offered a 12-month contract for an early renewal of 7-1 of this year, to take us to 7-1 of next year. That would include a small increase in the base rate. They also offered a six-month contract at the end of the current contract, with almost equivalent small increase in the base rate. That would take us from January 1st of 17 through June 30th of 17, to get us to that July 1st effective date.
So 18 months on that second one? So 18 months?
It would just be a six-month attachment, uh, to the current contract. It would need an increase in that section of the attachment. They were not going to continue it as is, as far as the rate structure. The policy structure would be the same, the, um, employee, the way that the employees see it would be exactly the same, their contributions would be the same, that kind of thing was what they were proposing, uh, with their alternatives. If we were to look at those alternatives, and get us to that goal of 7-1 of 17, that would give us plenty of time for education, and for evaluation of a self-funded alternative, for a 7-1-17 implementation of a self-funded alternative. So either one of those options that Kansas City Blue Cross has proposed would get us to 7-1. The six-month extension at the end of, or the six-month addition at the end of the current contract would probably be the least financially impactful. It would have a small increase, but for a shorter period of time, than if we renewed 7-1 this year to take us all the way. So, at this point, um, I'd like to explore a little bit more, I'd like to dive into a little bit more details, negotiate a little bit more, but ultimately, um, it looks like that may be our best option, to get us to that 7-1 of 17, and make us ready to, um, jump into a self-funded alternative.
So this way, we would get to the point where we would be on a school calendar year, as opposed to...
Exactly, exactly. Make that, um, much easier for budgeting, for, um, employee contracts, and, and make that all coincide together.
So that way, the employees wouldn't have to worry about a shift in the middle of a contract.
Exactly, exactly.
Do you know what the increase would be for the, um, uh, six-month addition?
What they proposed today was about a 6.9% increase. Again, that's why I'd like to go back and negotiate some further, look at, um, you know, any, any alternatives that we can do as far as a rate corridor, or, um, absorbing a little bit more loss, uh, in the claims department. The way the contract is set up, you have a maximum that you would pay out each month, so you're not going to exceed. If you have a high claims month, you're not going to exceed that maximum, you have a safety net in place. And so, um, if, if we were to look at some alternatives, you'd still have that maximum in place, that safety net, but you'd just get there a little quicker, uh, for lack of a better way of describing it. So I'd like to explore that a little bit more, before we bring a final recommendation.
I would definitely think that either the six-month addition, um, or taking it to market January 1, 17, really is the only two options we're looking at then. The 12-month, I don't think, uh, would benefit us, and if they're not gonna renew it at the same rate, obviously, that's out. So really, you're down to two options. One, for the six-month add-on, or taking it to market January 1.
Right, I agree. I have not heard from the district that you have complaints, um, as far as the staff's utilization, or the services that are being provided. That would be another indicator for us to take it to markers, market sooner, and we don't, we haven't had that. So far, we have employee satisfaction with the, uh, current policy and the providers, and so, uh, you know, if we can negotiate the least financial impact, to get us to a point to, to be responsible to take into a, a self-funded contract, I think that's probably the best bet.
When, when would you be able to, to get these more details?
I'm hoping within 30 days.
Because I would like for you to come back, and also, um, meet with both, uh, our staff groups, and possibly, uh, reconvening the insurance committee.
Sure. Be glad to do that. Any other questions?
That sounds good.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, no problem.
Okay.
Safe travels. I'm so sorry you had to sit here all this time, but look how much you've learned!
She's gonna learn a lot from us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
Chris, are Spring Garden change, change orders?
Good evening, members of the board. Uh, my first item for your consideration is a change order to the air conditioning project at Spring Garden. As you may recall, uh, we actually had this unit in the C I P list. Then we removed it from the C I P list, and, uh, we already had proposals for air conditioning, Spring Garden, and Rubidoo. Therefore, it becomes a change order. Now, I will tell you that we had a budget bid already in place for, to replace this unit, and it's very close to what this amount is from E S P. So our recommendation is to approve the change order number one, to the Spring Garden Air Conditioning Project, in the amount of $47,875 to replace the unit in the gym.
I saw a move.
We have a motion, and a second?
I started to, but she got it out first.
Okay.
I was slow on the draw.
Go right ahead, Ms. Consolvo.
Yes. Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hasley?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, 9.3?
Okay, the next item for your consideration is, uh, the proposal to air condition Edison, Lake, and Hyde. We asked E S P to give us proposals to air condition those buildings, and we, we asked them for several options, whether that would be window units, up to, uh, units like what we're, like, like we're putting in at Spring Garden, Rubidoo, and then to the very top-of-the-line systems, which they have done so. One of the things that you're gonna have to, to consider is the long-term use of these buildings, okay? So we talked about it, and we haven't even asked them for a proposal for Humboldt, because we're thinking that we're, our plan is, we're gonna put window units in Humboldt. Okay? Then we also, the discussion has been that, what are we gonna do with Hyde in the near future? Which begs to be discussed, and I think that probably part of B L D D's presentation will address that, okay? So before I get to the recommendation, I think that it'd be important that you be able to ask the questions from E S P about these proposals. So I have, uh, I have here this evening Bob Miller and Kent Clow from E S P, if you'll come on up, and, um, they can kind of talk you through the proposals.
Thank you. Okay. They looked familiar, I was like, "How do I go with them?"
Yeah, last time we were here was in late January, it's when we were talking about the two middle schools, so, under contract now. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity, and, uh, it, this is very, very much the same as what we discussed on the middle schools, the same approach. And, uh, what we have up here, it would be table two in the, uh, material.
Are we, which, which attachment are we looking at?
That's the second one.
Is this the second one?
If you want to, okay.
Does it say Lake, Edison, Hyde, A C? Yep, you got it, okay.
So what we have in table two are, uh, three different options that we're responding to. Options four and five, we mutually determine are in the best interest of the school district. But with option one is the lowest first cost to add air conditioning. It's not looking at true energy efficiency, it's looking at what is the cheapest price to get that installed. Uh, option two, the variable refrigerant flow, uh, solution, which is what you selected for the two middle schools in January. And then we have the option three for the four-pipe chiller. So we have it broken down by the different options of what, uh, the solution might be for your consideration.
So what type of this lowest-end A C are we talking? Are these, like, temporary units, or is this just a system?
Well, there's a little more information on that, and I, it's on another page, let me, uh, it should give the breakout. It's on the lowest first cost, it would be on, probably on page seven. Lowest first cost, which actually shows what some of those are. But primarily, it is a, pardon?
I mean, it's primarily in the classrooms and offices, it would be window units, um, in terms of air conditioning the hallways, it would be... In terms of air conditioning, the hallways, it would be ductless split units. That may or may not mean anything to you, but there's really no ductwork associated with those. And then there's a gymnasium at Edison that would need a rooftop unit with some ductwork to air condition it, and then the cafeteria over at Hyde.
How much do we have in our bond left?
Go ahead, Wes.
1.6 million.
So my concern with the long-range plan that we already have in place, these schools are all slated to close. So eventually. So my concern is going full force, putting permanent air conditioning in these schools. And I know that Hyde, because I was there for 11 years, and Edison, I know because this year, I believe, and Chris, you could probably talk to this, on the third floor there were doctor's notes for air conditioning units that weren't able to be put in the third level because there wasn't enough amp, or what do you...
Yeah, the subpanels are undersized. They're like only 60-amp subpanels. Of course, part of the proposal would be to address the electrical needs of those buildings. I believe even the low cost would address the electrical needs for the window units. There certainly wouldn't be a full-scale electrical upgrade like you would need if you went with Option 2. Option 2 would include the electrical upgrade as well.
So that this cost right here includes the electrical upgrades?
They would provide the subpanels needed to run the window units, yes.
So do we have to contact the power company to get new lines?
No, the service that's there, the electrical service, the power that comes to the building is sufficient.
Okay, it's just the box.
It's in the boiler room, and it's distributed out. The problem is, is when it's distributed out, you have panels around the building.
Yes.
They are grossly undersized.
Okay, so this addresses upgrading those panels?
Yes, they would have to install new panels to run the window units.
In addition to what's there.
Right.
Okay, can we piecemeal this? Is it possible to take?
That's basically what our recommendation is. If you look at the order of what we're trying to do in the long-term facility plan, which nothing's been decided technically yet, but if you took these in order potentially, you know, obviously Humboldt's been talked about at great length, and all likelihood, if closed, it would be first on the list. If you took this on down, would Hyde be next? In my opinion, that's what I would be looking at. The two lower ones would be Edison and Lake, okay? As far as time-wise, it would be further down the road if it all happened. And that's the thing that you've really got to take a look at, is when would you be able to do all this? In all likelihood, you know, you're still one to three years out to even get anything truly done to close any of the other three, maybe outside of Humboldt. And then if you've got to get something passed to do a bond issue, that's not necessarily given. If you did something even in three years, you're still probably two years away to fully get something constructed. So that brings you to five. Even if you look at a five-year term on this and your investment on your dollars with 1.6 that you told the public in 2012 that you're going to air condition elementary buildings? That's what we're suggesting, is you take Option 2 on Edison and Lake and Option 1 on Hyde. Humboldt will strictly become window units.
That's going to put us over the 1.6, though. If we did Edison, Option 2, Hyde and Lake, Option 1, we'd be just under.
That'd be 2.15 million.
For those other first ones that you said?
If you took Option 2 on both those, on Edison and Lake, and Option 1 on Hyde, it'd be 2.1 million.
Part of it is air-conditioned.
Part.
Part of it is.
How do you have it?
So we would end up just paying out of our own coffers for that extra?
For the remainder of that, the 500,000 remaining.
Well, what do you guys think of doing just Edison and then Hyde and Lake do the window units? Because that would be under the 1.6. It's like 1.5. What was my number I figured out? 1.563.
Say that again. Well, that's what I'm saying, Dennis, that really you'd want to do those up maybe better to do them right with Option 2.
I would agree.
It's in a floodplain. I do want to remind everyone of that.
It's in a floodplain.
Lake is at a floodplain, and that when we were going out and doing the community engagement, people living in that area, because we had originally wanted to make that the middle school, because they have land, it would be a great place to have a middle school. But the people in that community didn't want to have it in a floodplain because they're afraid of what happens when a flood happens. Then we lose the school, and then we'd have to rebuild. So listening to what the community said, that's why we took it off, kind of off of the table there, and we're proposing to build a new middle school.
How many times has that school flooded?
Never.
But the last time I know, it was laughing at the door.
So.
Hey, I'm listening to the community, that's what they said.
So my question is, if we did the low end for all of them, what's the life cycle of this type of, I mean...
It would be rather short. I mean, window units probably have a two-to-three-year life on them. The other thing to consider with Option 1, we're not doing anything with the heating system. The heating system would remain as it is, which is, it's aged, and certainly in Edison and Hyde. It's old in Lake as well, so you're still on that original life cycle. Could the boilers and the heating systems there last another five to 10 years? Maybe.
Yeah. I just, my concern is, is that when you start putting millions of dollars into a building that you think you're going to close within five years, five dollars, five years, what's the return on that investment? When we go to sell it or do whatever we're going to do with it, are we going to recoup that? I'm just, I'm asking questions.
Spring Garden is going to become the new Hyde. And there was...
That's what you're completely waiting on the BLDD.
Yeah, we need BLDD to come back with those...
But that's what BLDD is coming back with updated information next meeting, at our next meeting.
I think it's difficult to come to a full conclusion on this without those recommendations from BLDD.
Even at that, if you, again, looking just at a five-year window, on a 2.1 million, that's 420,000, basically you're investing annually. In your opinion, is that a wise investment annually? What's the long-term, what's the guarantee on these?
I mean, on Option 2? On Option 2, that's a 15-to-20-year system, so that would last 15 to 20 years. Now, I guess if you were to demolish the building, then it wouldn't make any sense. If you're going to repurpose it or sell it, then it would hold its value.
So you think that would increase the value of the building when we sold it?
Yes, I do.
Especially if we use it for something else, which we sometimes do.
And then Option 1 is strictly, you're talking about, just like commercial units on outside, sitting outside a window.
Correct.
Did you say that Option 2 does include the heating?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I sort of agree with Brian that we, I would like to have the BLDD recommendations. That would be good information to have. It would make it easier for me to say.
And when are we hearing from them?
Next time.
Wednesday, they're making a presentation to the Facility Committee. Then they'll be at the May 11 work session. What is your timetable to have to have this answer by to complete before the start of school?
Pretty much right away.
There is no pressure in that whatsoever.
No, but realistically, I mean, it's not that the work couldn't happen on second shift, and we could still work around kids once school started. But there's a little bit of a labor premium for that based on the prevailing wage statute. So to push it off much longer is going to make it difficult to get it done on time, and it may push it into...
And Wes, what is the timeframe that we've got to spend the 1.6 million by?
By the end of September.
Is it September or December?
September.
September?
Yes.
Well, I think we should spend 1.5 whatever and upgrade as much as we can, but not go over. That's what I think we should do. What do you guys think?
Can you wait for a decision until after our, was it May 11? May 11 meeting?
I mean, that puts it in a precarious state, that I don't know that we could get it done by the start of school in August.
Would the prices hold, though?
The prices would hold if you're willing to allow us to complete the work during the school year, which I don't know how feasible that would be.
How far into the school year do you think you'd have to go?
It would, I mean, the way we had set this up and had looked at it, and then the pricing that we got was based on having approval pretty much tonight to move and be complete August 15. So for every day that we delay, that pushes it past, a day past that August 15 date.
And May 11 was a work session. Do we take action at work sessions now?
There'd be no action. You'd have to come back into the special board meeting to take action, which potentially, as we talked earlier, could be done. I think it would behoove the board to work to get these elementaries air-conditioned, obviously. We talked extensively to ESP in regards to different options. The whole question is if and when you would close any. That's the whole question. You've got to pass a bond issue, you've got to do some revenue issues, and...
Got your calculator out? We've got to update some other schools before we can think about closing.
So can I make a suggestion? Make a motion? Well, I want to know how much it's going to cost before I make the motion.
That's for Edison on number 2 and Hyde on number 1.
No, I was going to do Edison 1, Hyde 1, and Lake 2.
I don't have that one down.
If you'll hold her just one minute while she calculates.
I have a discussion about that.
If we did Edison at the Option 1, Hyde at Option 1, and then Lake at Option 2, that would be the 1.5 change.
5.1.
Chris, you're shaking your head no. You don't like that option?
So Option 1 would be the window units?
Yes, and split systems.
For Edison?
Were you shaking your head?
Option 1 on all of them is a combination of window units and split systems.
So would that be a good compromise?
Well, you're definitely staying in within that 1.6 million better. I think the question on Edison would be, what are you going to do to your, from a short term, I think Edison is probably further down the road than obviously Hyde or Humboldt. You have the inner city, and you're really going to have to build new, would you not?
Well, no, it depends on where you put your additions, because Edison's not very far from Mark Twain or Coleman. So you have, in both of those places, you can add on. It's the only one near the historic district. So they're just literally blocks away.
Yeah, that's a question you get into. Where does it fit? If you could get, if you could get five to 10 years out of this investment on 1.6 million, I think you're doing a very good job, no matter what you do. If you think you want to resell...
And with Edison, even if the school's shut down, I can see the district using it for some other purpose or selling it, and I think the resale value's going to be higher with a better air conditioning unit in it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept Option 1 for Hyde and Lake and Option 2 for Edison.
What's the, what was the cost on that one? You made me erase it before. I'm sorry.
It's less than 1.6.
Now, Lake, isn't it partially air-conditioned already?
It is already partially air-conditioned, that's right. So it's inexpensive. It's 1.563133.
So then are we only, are we going to be partially, partially air-conditioning it if we don't go with the Option 2? I mean, in saying that it's partially air-conditioned, then we just do Option 1? Is that going to air-condition the whole school?
Yes.
It will? Okay.
It will just fill in what's not done.
Approximately, how many window units are we talking about going into Lake, then?
You only need probably three or four more window units to finish Lake.
To finish Lake?
There's already, yeah, half of the school has rooftop units already in place. The addition, the south addition is completely air-conditioned, as well as the gymnasium.
So how many, let us back up just a second.
But you have no hallways.
How many did you say?
Really, all of the rooms have window units in them except for about three classrooms.
Three classrooms and one office.
Right.
Three classrooms and one office.
None of the hallways are air-conditioned.
And so what's it going to take to air-condition the hallways?
About 235?
Pardon?
I think it was about five split units, five deckless split units, and then there would be a rooftop.
Tell me what a split unit is. What does that mean?
It's similar to what you would have in your home. You have a unit that sits outside, and then you have a unit in with a blower cord inside.
I don't have air conditioning in my house.
Oh, okay.
How do you live, man?
Just open up the window. So the split unit is, okay, here's where I'm at right now with this, with this Option 1. If you're telling me, well, I need two or three air units, two, three window units, and then we need to do the hallway, what kind of units are you putting in that's going to cost $235,000 for three, four window units and one unit for the hallway?
There's more than one unit for the hallway. There's about six units for the hallways, and then there would be a rooftop unit for the cafeteria.
Six units for the hallway? That hallway's not that long.
Yeah, yes, it is.
There's only one floor.
It's a one-floor school, right?
Yeah, it's a one-story.
And electrical upgrades.
And the electrical associated with all that, yes.
Open a window.
So we're going to vote?
Wow.
I move that we, my motion was that we approve Option 1 for Hyde and Lake and Option 2 for Edison for a total. So the total was 1563133.
And that basically keeps you under the 1.6?
That's right.
Okay, motions on the floor. First and second, Ms. Kinsler.
Mrs. David?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Yes, we need to get them air-conditioned.
Yay!
I love that the students law have...
A decision!
Yes.
Was that a good compromise?
Yep, we're going to use the money to air-condition the schools, and I guess window units from middle schools go to Humboldt.
Under budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get moving on it.
Yes.
Discuss this in our work session. Give us a brief overview, Chris.
Yeah, so it's three locations. Keller Construction actually has given us a discount if we were to award the entire project to them. They marked that down, about $8,000. So our recommendation is to accept the bids from Keller Construction. That's a total of, with the alternate bid, with base bid to alternate one, that's a total of $210,000. That's the administrative recommendation. And also, if you approve it, to approve the board president to sign the contract.
And we have seen these a couple of times.
And we have seen these a couple of times at a couple of meetings. He should be pretty familiar to all of us by now.
Yeah.
I move that we accept the asphalt replacement bids as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Do I have a, this question? What was the savings between the, the bidders? Was it eight?
About $8,000, yes.
About eight?
Yeah. If you were, if you were to add the low bids, there was... There was, was low on one bid. So if you add all those up.
What if you put it all together, it was eight?
Right, so the, sometimes Keller will do that, sometimes contractors will do that. They'll give you incentive to take, get the whole package down.
Take the whole package, yeah. Okay.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Epstein.
Hasley?
Yes.
Bruceman? Yes.
Yes. 9.5, Mr. Silk on playground?
Okay, so we did receive bids on new playground equipment at Mark Twain. They had three bids, one we threw out since it was way over budget. I think you heard Dr. Teeman talk about the, the two presentations and one that they're very pleased with. So the administrative recommendation is to accept the bid from Game Time in the amount of $98,711.69. We do not need the alternate bid number two. And if you approve it, then also authorize the board president to sign the contract.
I would make, go ahead. I would make a motion to accept the administrative recommendations and authorize the board president to sign the contract with Game Time. Second.
Are we doing the little?
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
The poured rubber set?
Yes, they'll receive the poured-in-place surface.
Just was wondering which one it was.
And Hosea, actually, they have poured-in-place also.
Mr. Sneeden, would you like to say something? It was under the $100,000 budget.
It's the ADA compliant stuff.
OCR, yeah, to keep in with our agreement with OCR.
Yes.
Any, any more discussion?
Dennis, do you have your mic on? Do you wanna have your mic on?
Only when he's telling jokes.
Let's keep Dennis's mic off.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Consolvo, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Audiovisual.
Tim?
What you have before you is the AV bid that we put out last month on the April 18th. We put out four separate bids there and they're, the winning bids were bold, in bold letters there for you guys to look at. And we, administrative recommendation is to take those bids.
Move accept the administration recommendation?
Second.
It's been first and second. Any discussion? None? Ms. Consolvo?
Mrs. Hadley?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Miss Hodges?
Yes.
Stanford?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden, is your mic on? Yes. All right, student transportation as discussed in our work session also.
Solon?
Bring Roy up with me. We presented this in the work session and there was two options. And then we kinda added a third, cause we went, Roy went back to Apple and tried to negotiate that down to zero increase for year one, a one in year two, 1.5 in year three. Then for the four and five, it would be based on Consumer Price Index. So what we're asking from you tonight is a direction, whether you want us to, to engage further in the contract with them, to negotiate all the particulars, or do you wanna take option one, which is a one-year option with Apple at a 2.6% increase and do an RFP next year?
Any discussion? I have a question. Mr. Roy, you're a shrewd, shrewd negotiator.
He is good.
What do you think? Are we at the best we can get?
I think after the research that we've done, some of the other districts that we've talked to, I've had extensive discussions with Olathe School District, who went through this process themselves within the last year or two. They wound up with first student, but that was the carrier that they had before, went through the RFP process, only had three qualified bidders. One backed out during the process, yet they still wound up paying, I think, 12 to 14% more than what they were with first student when they, their contract came to a cycle end. Also talked to Hickman Mills, which is a slightly smaller school district than us, but to get that perspective of what kinda ground we were standing on in the market. And I did have a good conversation with them. They're with Apple Bus. They're very happy with the service that they're getting down there as we are, and that's one reason why we re-engaged with them in order to maintain this relationship. Because as mentioned with the sped situation earlier, this can be a disruption, changing bus services and so forth. And when you're happy with a service provider, it's my philosophy to stick with them and renegotiate and extend a contract, cause it's in our mutual best interests. And cost-wise, we're right in the middle. Olathe being a larger school district and so forth, and being metropolitan-based support for their first student, they pay a less per route than we do. But Hickman Mills has that same support infrastructure in a metropolitan area, yet they pay a little bit more than we do. So our, we're right on target with where we feel we, we should be. And we don't see collectively right now that it's in our best interest to take this out for RFP and risk taking it to market and possibly bearing a higher increase. That's why we went back and renegotiated with them. They were accommodating and we've gotten a flat rate for the first year out of the gate, 1% for the second year and 1.5. That's guaranteed. There's no fix or float. Talking to Olathe and some of the other school districts, you can wind up paying anywhere from 2% to 5% per year based on that Consumer Price Index. And we all know gas is going up and other things are going up. And we felt it was worth the risk and in the district's best interest to take this out there. And we're just asking you if we can continue to follow this direction, save that 2.6% that we're guaranteed to spend if we stick with Apple for the last renewal year of the existing contract.
And we've had no issues with them whatsoever? Everything has gone fine? Hasn't been any problems whatsoever?
No, it, they, they're very, they're very good to work with. I don't get many complaints from the principals, you know, with the routes and such things. And they're very accommodating, you know, when we need things changed at the last minute for routes or making accommodations for extra trips that they have to make for us.
And but we always have that out just in case, right? There's verbiage in there that if something were to go wrong, that we would still be able to get out of a contract if, if we extended it for, you know?
Right, we'll go, we'll go through the process and go through the regular contract and then, of course, it'll go to Mr. Hatley for, for his approval too.
Joe would never let us get a contract without that in it.
Yeah, there should be severability and, and if for non-performance and that type of thing that we can step in. And again, it's only three years. The last two years will be optional, no matter what.
I would think that would be in our best interest and theirs too, if we were to extend.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we recommend to do it, it's...
Well, that would be my motion is to do your recommendation.
We got a first and a second discussion. Is there a cost involved with early termination of contract on the school district side? Would there be in the contract?
I, you know, in, in the current contract, I don't believe there is. And so it would be, it would be, it would be taking our current contract and renegotiating it with this lower rate and then working out the little fine details with them.
Had this been in the first three years, there might have been something like that. But since this is one of our two renewal option years, I believe, we're, we're in the clear.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But we'll make sure it's all fully vetted and goes through Joe.
Yeah, the motion and second is just to move forward in working on a contract.
Okay, okay. Ms. Devon?
Yes.
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 Mr. Sneeden? Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next would be a high school algebra plan. There has been a little bit of angst that's been involved with high school algebra in the last couple of weeks. And so before we get into, Ms. Sandy, getting into talking about the plan, I think we have some questions that we'd like to ask and get vetted out first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Ms. Hodges, would you like to take the lead on that?
Sure, I got an email from a parent whose son was in one of the algebra classes. It's called a flip classroom, where they watch a video the night before that's supposed to prepare them for the material they're gonna learn in class when they get there. But her son, in his class, they didn't actually present the material the next day. They were just able to watch the video again if they would like to with headphones in. And he didn't do a very good job learning that way. And, and he's struggling and our end of year, you know, end of course, grades are low. And I had a concern that this isn't working very well for our students. And so I wanted to find out what we might be doing to change that.
Yes, and I'd be more than happy to look into that specific situation. Obviously, it's up to the teachers to do a variety of instructional strategies. One of those is a, a flipped classroom to where they view the video prior. I know some teachers say, hey, read the chapter, you know, read, do something, some activity to prepare you for the lesson the next day. I would, I would like to think that, you know, all of our teachers would do a variety of strategies. If that's not working for the child, then, then we would try something else. And so I'm more than happy to, to look into that for you. I know it's a strategy that the Algebra One team is, is trying at Central High School. And so I most definitely can do that.
Well, it just seemed that it might be true of more of the students than just this one, because the, the grades were low and lower than in the past. So I will, I'll get with you and get you her information, cause I think that would be part of researching what all happened for you, so.
No problem.
Well, I'd like to make a comment before Sandy starts. I actually was at PTA State Convention this weekend and happened to sit at dinner night, dinner one night with a bunch of high school kids. And somehow we got on the topic of algebra. And apparently, this is not just a problem here. Apparently, it is a problem everywhere, because the kids were all complaining about it. So I told the parents that we were, excuse me, looking at creating this kind of next step or kinda this step. And all of the parents at the table were so excited that we were looking at doing this, because they thought it, it would be a very big help to all of the kids. Cause these kids were like, I mean, straight A students. And when they're saying they're having problems with the algebra, then we have a problem with however or whatever we're doing. So anyway, I, I just thought you would, y'all might benefit from that little tidbit. But the other parents were excited that we were looking at it, so.
Dr. Siegel, is the cost on this 32 or 33,000?
33,000, yes. There will be three middle school, one from, one of our north side schools, one from the south side and one from midtown middle school.
So the adjustment on the curriculum writing?
Would be 8,000, correct.
If we make that correction.
That's the amount for adding the pre-algebra class, right?
Correct, yes, to get it up and going for next school year.
I think that sounds great too, but just in addition, this other thing, so.
Yep.
I have a question on what our math scores mean, where they're at. How, is everyone doing the flip class?
Not everybody, only Central High School.
Only at Central? And so at Central, what kind of data do we know, do we have that shows whether or not the flip class is, is beneficial or not? Cause I'm trying to find out, is it the process or is it the instructor?
And I'd be more than happy to gather that for you. I didn't ask them for that. I know that they've collected data on the flip classroom. I know that they were, they were trying a different strategy and approach. So obviously, Algebra One scores have been a concern for a few years. So they were trying something new and thinking outside the box as far as a different approach to their students. And so we were trying to empower the teachers to try something new in their classrooms. And so I'd be more than happy to gather that for you and bring it to the next...
How long have we been doing the flip class?
Just this year.
This is the first year?
This is the first year.
Correct.
Are these new teachers who are using this strategy or is it across the board?
Across the board. The entire Algebra One team collectively are using them.
Decided that that's what they were gonna do this year, and so that was the strategy they were trying.
Yes.
They'll have some, and of course, to look at here before too long.
Right, and I just wanna, and I'd be more than happy to get you the information on the flip classroom. I just wanna be cognizant to, we're talking, we're dipping into instructional strategies and I would just caution you to...
Yeah, we're two different things.
Reserve that to the, to the teachers. I just...
I'm not, I'm not interested in trying to tell a teacher how to teach. That's not what I'm asking.
I'd be more than happy to get you more.
I'm just curious, and have we done our due diligence to see if the new process is, is a, is a good process? Because right now, our math scores are terrible. And is it process or is it the instructor? And only you, on academia's side, can tell us that, and that's why I'm asking you to bring me the information.
Absolutely.
Mr. Sneeden?
Sorry to interrupt you.
You're not, sir.
But I hear, it's only at Central?
Yes, this particular class.
I hear this all the time. Why, why can't we have classes at all the schools and not just Central all the time?
I believe it's a pilot, and so when you have a pilot, it's not...
We're gonna offer pre-algebra at all three schools. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, yes, pre-algebra will be at all three schools.
This is a proposal coming from the high school principals.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you was talking about the question I was asking.
Are you gonna speak to this or are you ready for a motion?
I am, I am ready. This is, we talked about it last board meeting and so I'd ask for your approval.
Well, I would make a motion to accept your recommendation.
Yes, and I would second that. And I wanna say, I don't know if we have anybody left in the audience. I'm super proud of the math teachers who, who have noticed the need and come up with this. And I do think that it's a beginning, so we wouldn't wanna limit them. I will be excited to see what they come up in curriculum writing. This is great for next year, but if we need to tweak it, being a math teacher, knowing that you have a vision, but then that can change, that we might look at it again next year and make sure it's working and make it the best that it can be. And after all, we'll put it in the hands of the experts, which are the math teachers, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any more discussion?
No.
Ms. Consolvo?
Yes.
Mr. Sneeden?
No.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Miss Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Hadley?
Yes.
Mr. Bruceman?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes. Let's go to our science materials.
Okay, in the consent agenda, you approved the revision of the science curriculum. And so reminds you, that last meeting brought to you the proposals for purchasing science resources. At that time, you asked us to do a little bit of more looking into if we were to purchase by year. And so some of the information I provided you was, the company came back and said that for the initial year, it is 416,000. And the reason the initial year is more is because you're purchasing the kits. Every year after that is 163,000 per year, which is what you're buying the online resources and the, the note, the science notebooks. And so if you were to look at an eight-year purchase, it's about, it's a little over 1.5 million dollars for what we are proposing to purchase upfront for the $700,000. And so my recommendation is, continues to be, we ask that you approve the $700,000 purchase for eight years. As a second option, then, we would consider, ask that you consider the six-year purchase, which was right at the $600,000. I remind you that our cycle is an eight-year process. And so to buy anything short of that in six years, and so when I asked the company, so if we only bought six years, what would those next two years cost? The only thing they can do is tell you what it would have cost if you were doing that today, and that is 163,000 per year. But in six years, that will definitely change.
So you want the eight-year?
Yeah. That would be my recommendation, is to purchase the whole eight years.
I would make a motion to accept the recommendation for the eight-year quote.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Sneeden?
Maybe I'm outlying again.
No, you're not, sir. Go right ahead.
Would this stuff be outdated in eight years?
They update it.
They update it every...
Yeah, you're purchasing the online component, which is updated as the updates happen. We receive those for free, because we make an eight-year purchase. They commit to us that we receive those updates that, that happen for free.
And how much are we talking here on this proposal? This motion you made, how much is this? 600,000?
They only do it every eight, every six years.
Seven, eight, eight years.
Cause can't do everybody's all at once, it's expensive.
It's on an eight-year cycle.
Total cost now, Mr. Schindorff is what?
Total cost for eight years is right at, right at 700,000.
750,000, some more in there.
Mr. Metz, this is a current year budget expense, though.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
And it's in our budget at that amount?
Yes, that is correct.
Clarifying for everyone.
For those that would like to know.
Any more discussion? We have a motion on the floor in a second.
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Hesley?
Yes.
Mr. Brisman?
Yes.
Mr. Recker?
Yes.
Thank you, boy, appreciate it.
Okay, now we're at new business. Our, the first item is a topic that our guests so eloquently spoke of on, our sped classes. Ms. Bursmire, would you bring us up to speed on that, please?
I would be happy to. What I'd like to do is pass you a hard copy of my talking points. One, I'd like to do that to memorialize my comments. And that way, I think it will also help you follow along and see some of the answers to the parents' questions in writing. That's what you take one and pass them around. And then I've got three copies for our families factors. While those are going around, I would like to thank the Tow family, the Stoll family, and the Camo family for being very patient. They are wonderful parents, and they're here because they love their children and want to see things done right by their child, in their opinion. And so I commend you, they've waited a very long time. So if you would, please be respectful of my time and opportunity to answer your questions and so that they have an opportunity like they've been heard, I greatly appreciate it. If you would, let's just look at the top. And you will see there are two things that we have been considering as a department. And the first one is the relocation of the K-6 self-contained class at Coleman that serves students primarily with moderate to significant intellectual disabilities and severe language impairments to Oak Grove. So we're talking about a class at Coleman. It's about ten students, K through six. And I would like to, it would be our recommendation to consider to move it to Oak Grove. The reason for that is right now, that K-6 program, we're finding it's really limiting our students' opportunities for instruction with similarly aged peers. Even with children with intellectual disabilities, there is a significant and noticeable difference between a five-year-old kindergartner and a sixth grader. And by moving this program to Oak Grove, where we have those fine programs for children on autism spectrum disorder or with similar characteristics, we could do a lot more flexible grouping. So rather than just have a small group of K-6, I can include them at Oak Grove, and we could do flexible grouping either based on age or ability. There's some other positives about Oak Grove that we feel like we could maximize our opportunities for our students. One would be some of our most well-trained staff in applied behavior analysis are located at Oak Grove. Our staff at Coleman also have been trained in applied behavior analysis. But if I could get them all in one building, we would have strength, really, additional strength, it'd be value-added. Our related service providers that are skilled in working with students with limited to no language are housed out of Oak Grove. I could put them all together. It would keep, it just, it helps us not to have to retrain staff if I have them all in one place. Let me check my notes, that's why I wrote them down. Also, I want to make note that Oak Grove has set aside a room for sensory, either for, that's the trouble with reading glasses. You never know quite what to do with them. The sensory room, we don't have a sensory room, per se, at Coleman, but we do at Oak Grove because there's space. And we have staff that understand how to use that effectively. These students also could benefit from that. So let me make sure I haven't missed anything. Two things there at the bottom. I do believe transportation, by aligning these like programs in one building, there could be a potential to reduce the number of routes or at least make the time shorter on the bus. That's yet to be determined, but I have seen that happen before. And then the point above that is we always give consideration to children that are going to be in sixth grade anytime we move a program. So that if we can make it happen and they will not lose benefit of their education, we will find a way for them to stay at that building. So that was the rationale for moving that program to Oak Grove. So before we move on, do you have questions or think, something about that specific topic you want to ask?
My question? My question is, is option one, relocation of the Coleman self-contained class to Oak Grove, what are the downsides to that option?
That is, it's not necessarily option one, it's just, it's just a suggestion. Downsides are the same that we face anytime we move programs. And usually, I consider it a blessing if I can make it one school year without having to move a program. You will find, just as you've seen tonight, parents are emotionally attached to their buildings. Their children are emotionally attached to the building. That is always something that we have to be sensitive to. Siblings, we have always given parents opportunity, if they have children that are non-disabled, to attend the same school that their child with a disability is attending if it is a district-wide program. So these very specialized programs, because they're district-wide, children from all over the district go to Oak Grove. We would then give their parents an option if they will provide transportation to send them there. So that has always been something we've had to consider. Sometimes, parents will seek a hardship transfer and ask if their non-disabled children can stay, but they generally continue have to provide their own transportation. And the building principal and district administration would need to look at enrollment numbers to ensure that it wasn't causing any type of overcrowding.
So have you talked to the Coleman parents about moving this program to Oak Grove?
I have not because on the back, you'll see what some of the timelines as they have unfolded is there was a clear communication plan that I had set forth. One of my very first steps is to notify, once we seem like we have a good handle on things, is to let principals know, to let staff know. I had asked for forty-eight hours to notify all parents. Unfortunately, evidently, someone went outside the bounds of my strong suggestion that they give me forty-eight hours to notify all parents. When a few parents find out ahead of others, it is unfortunate because they have not heard it from me, they have heard it from someone else. So when that occurred, it's quite a natural response for them to reach out to you and say, I heard this, but I didn't hear it from the director, what is going on? So because of the intensity of the motions, we, I put a timeout on notifying anyone else. Because when that happens, you have to first address those who feel most offended. Otherwise, you just move on and create additional problems. So I did try to use my best judgment, which was to pause the, any further action. And that is why I have not notified them because, I'll make it an end recommendation, but when things get escalated to this point, sometimes you can create more upset people by trying to push forward until everyone's questions are answered.
Well, I know that when we did the pact stuff, special education was something that came up every single, and you were there, so you know.
Yes.
And so for me, that's very near and dear to my heart. And I know that these are, I don't want to call them delicate, but they are easily upsettable. And I know that my talks, because I worked at Hyde for, you know, eleven years, and we had a high-functioning class. That was my vocabulary of special needs. I have not, in my life, been around that, so I had no idea. But through the process, getting to know people and knowing, getting to know their, understand their concerns, it's very difficult, I know, on these kids to be moved from an environment in which they are settled and happy. So that concerns me because I don't want that for any of our kids. I know that when we built the two new schools, there were classrooms that were designed specifically for special needs children. So I want to see that utilized as much as we possibly can because they were built to house that. So I guess, before you get to the rest of it, so this class at Coleman is one classroom.
Yes.
And it's ten children.
Yes.
So the other classroom that you are thinking of moving to Coleman from Oak Grove is one classroom?
Yes.
So is there any way possible that both classrooms could stay there at Oak Grove?
Yeah, especially with what's there now that's moving out?
Why?
The Y.
Well, the Y.
We're talking about a year, right, when the Y will be out? And will that free up space?
But didn't we move another preschool class from Webster to Oak Grove? Could we possibly find another place for that?
I could, I could look for another place. We could look for additional space there. I would more than be willing to do that. But I next want to talk about the needs of Coleman's students.
Okay.
That I would be definitely willing to consider if you would be consider, if you would consider increasing my personnel. Because the reason why I was looking to move the class, the self-contained class, which is to for mild to moderate students with intellectual disabilities to Oak Grove, is because there are currently ten children who live in the Coleman attendance area who are not attending Coleman. They are attending other schools with self-contained programs such as Oak Grove. There are three children in the self-contained program at Oak Grove whose homes are in the Coleman district, Coleman attendance area. And then there are seven others that are located in either Field or Edison. And so my hope had been, because we have ten children that are Coleman attendance children and families who are not being served at Coleman, I felt like that was warranted to provide that service there at Coleman. So that, so I was hoping to do, it seemed like it was going to be a win-win that I could pull over the self-contained program and serve Coleman students at Coleman. And also then move the more significantly impaired students to Oak Grove to be where there was already programming there.
Ms. Bursmire, did you, now, those students that are at Oak Grove that live in the Coleman district, did the district ask them to move to Oak Grove, though?
Yes, when the building was, the history behind why the program at Coleman is at Coleman, is that program had been, it started out at Webster. When Webster closed, it went to Noyce. When Noyce closed, it went to Coleman. That whole group of Noyce, the whole Noyce family, you know, all moved to Coleman, and thus the special program. So, yes, since I have worked here and we created this program, it is now in its third building. But two of those moves was a result of the district closing buildings. And you, that happens in St. Joe because we're trying to right-size. This move is at my suggestion as trying to consolidate appropriate programming.
But the consolidation, I understand that. But from what I heard today, the disruption of continuity is a big deal. Is that correct?
It is a very big deal to parents because they love Oak Grove.
Well, not just with parents, what about the learning process of the students?
I have found that we have not had significant issues with students regressing for this reason. We have well-trained staff, and they work really hard to transition these students in an appropriate way with the least impact possible. The teacher and the pairs are coming with them. It will be different, it's a very different location, but we work hard to wrap around those children and make them feel welcome. And I know Heather Gladheart and her staff would do that.
Oh, they're a wonderful staff.
We don't have a principal that would not ensure that our families and children felt welcome. It is uncomfortable. Anytime you move, it's uncomfortable.
Could this whole decision be delayed one year?
Yes, and that, what I was going, my final recommendation would be this. Because we paused things, I really can't, in good conscience, let you wait thirty more days and mull it over. One, I lose all my staff May thirteenth. Okay, there is a lot of planning that has not been able to occur just in terms of the logistics of packing and moving and additional communication, talking about bus routes. Really, every child's IEP needs to be looked at again because if they can be served there, and we need to talk to the fifth graders going into sixth grade, that all takes time. And so I appreciate your patience, but, you know, when we have to stop work, then we've really run out of time at this point.
You mentioned if you would, if we would agree to more staff. What are you talking about? I mean, so if we take the Coleman kids, we move them to Oak Grove, they are all serviced at Oak Grove, how does that increase your staff? What are you going to need?
Well, if you do that, I still believe, because Coleman has a population of students that could benefit from a self-contained classroom, I think it's warranted to have a teacher there to do that. If we leave it as is, that's fine, they can all stay there. But I do want to make you aware that you have a group of students that could come back home and be served in their homeschool. And anytime we can do that is ideal, especially if we have room. I mean, there's some buildings we will never be able to do that at, for example.
And how many students can come back home?
Ten.
Ten.
There are ten children.
That needs to be vetted a little bit more.
Yeah, I would agree.
Exactly.
I think the best bet right now is.
Do nothing and just leave it alone.
To hold off for a year. I mean, this is something that we need to really look at.
Yeah, but she's got some good points about these other kids and how can they benefit at Oak Grove? Maybe we need to take this time to figure out how to get them there in the best way. Because the Y will be moving out, some things will be changing.
And I guess I'm concerned as a new board member, because you even mentioned it in what you said, or you kind of alluded to it. How many times do we move the sped program? I mean, if we've moved something three times in three years? Of all populations of kids, to move that many times? I'm not even sure how long you've been here, if that's been out of your control. But, boy, that is a huge concern for that population of kids.
One of the main questions throughout all this that has always been asked of Denise and any programs, what is the long-term solution to avoid that move?
Right.
And honestly, I think Denise does, if we can get this vetted through, is working on that long-term solution. So we don't have to continually to make these moves in serving the special needs students.
Ms. Bursmire, what are you looking for tonight?
To share information.
Okay. So are you considering then backing off of this for another year? Or is that what you're saying, or what is it?
Yes, I think it's in the best interest of staff, students, and families. There's not enough time now. The more I thought about it, and it was approached that we inform you tonight, give you thirty more days, at that point, we're, thirty days from now, we're into summer school. And it's just, we've run out of time. I stand behind the suggestion, and we can.
We can vet it some more.
We can have further discussions.
Yeah. Make sure all the parents that are involved have all the information so that.
I really think that the parents need to be, you know, educated, and they need to be part in, brought in, and not at the last minute. But again, you know, vet it early so that we can have time to do that.
I think the parents need to be able to see your whole plan instead of just part of it.
I think if you can live with that, we can live with that.
Okay.
I think, I think what I was hearing here, if I'm not mistaken, is you're really, we have competing values here. This seems to, you're trying to create efficiencies, which has been a little bit of a board directive, to be more efficient in our departments. Is, was that the objective here? Am I mistaken with that?
It is somewhat of, yes, it's efficiency. I think we can better utilize our staff. But I really strongly believe that moving like students. like students in one building is good for kids. It's, it's more, the, the, my primary goal was to do better by our students and that is to get them in the same building with like resources and adequate staffing.
And another year allows us to get, gain a lot more information.
I, I think that's a, a good move and also it'll allow the one parent who talked about spending most of the school year getting acclimated to the school and all of that, not having time to do that now. Because you can tell, you know, all parents are passionate about their kids, but when you're talking about special age kids, it's just, it seems to be a little bit more passionate.
Well, it should be. They.
That's right.
They have to deal with a little bit more. And so I understand. So thank you for the information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Nutritional Services Evaluation.
Good evening. You have our program evaluation. I would like to plan, to thank my planning team. They did a lot of work in looking at the implementation of our school meal programs. Through their input and review, we have developed our overall goals for the program and expected measurable outcomes, which you've seen. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Looks pretty standard.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next would be Curriculum Revision for Secondary Science.
The good stuff here. Curriculum revision for seven twelve secondary science, we're going to kind of combine this with ten point three and ten point four. I would like to introduce Dr. Jay Myers, Secondary Science Coordinator, who's been patiently awaiting since six thirty tonight. Thank you. Him and his team have worked very hard this year and he's going to tell you a little about their curriculum writing process and the resources. So, Dr. Myers.
Good evening, very evening. We, we've spent the last several years diving into something which was quite, quite crazy. About three years ago, we had to kind of put to a stop because of some changes that the, the state was going to make in terms of an assessment plan. Then they decided to keep our assessment plan the same, so we were kind of put back for a little while. And then it, then the House bill came, our Senate bill, that was going to write the new standards. And our concern was at that point, this is our moment, we needed to write, we needed to get our courses in alignment with, with the future of science education. And we went to the board, it was a committee meeting at the time, and we got the approval to go ahead and move forward. So pretty much like what you heard from my colleagues from the elementary groups, we organized teams of teachers and we dove into the national standards, which are called the next generation science standards, developed by states through the Achieve Organization. And we believe that those standards are far above what we've ever had in the past. And since then, Missouri has been looking and doing their own tweaking to that and they've pretty much, what you'll find when you see the new Missouri learning standards that have just been approved, they are very similar to the next gen science standards. And we're two years ahead. And so I'm pleased for that. And it's a lot of thanks to the teams. I had two middle school, I had a middle school team, a biology, chemistry, and physics team, and we really focused hard on our compulsory courses. Because the idea is that these are the standards that all students should be able to know and do by the end of grade twelve. And, and so we have created or revised a series of courses that you can have a chance to take a look at. I would say they're by no means perfect. They're always a work in progress. Our, our biggest challenge is going to be good implementation across the district. We've had some forward thinking in terms of professional development as well. Over the past three, past two years, we've had some extensive professional development with what's known as the scientific and engineering practices. So no longer do, do teachers teach about how science does its practice and then we, we're done with that and now we're going to move on to clouds. What we now do is we're looking at what, what, what my colleague Todd Schall said, it's called three-dimensional learning. So it's, it's learning a content strand that's embedded within a practice and a cross-cutting concept. So all three of those elements are put together in every performance expectation. And so what we've done in the compulsory courses of biology, chemistry, physics, and environmental is we've aligned those into units and topics and, and aligned it to those particular objectives. Like I said, I, I believe that, that our secondary staff is well-prepared for the implementation. The challenge is going to be, as I see it, how it will be assessed at the state level. We don't know what that looks like. We've, we've dove into it. We started looking at it a little more detail in November, but that's yet to be seen. And as a matter of fact, I think that's going to be part of our professional development plan for next year. So those are the, the major courses that we've worked with. And if you've got any questions about any of those, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions?
I know it's taken a long time to get to this point. It's taken a long.
It's taken a long time to get to this point. Looks great.
Yeah.
I remember the curriculum committee that you talked about where we.
Yes.
Where, oh, changing things now because the state's changing things.
Yeah, and, and it was, it was a really a bold move because when, when Shelley and I sat there and we said, we just don't think there's, I mean, even if the state does great things, comes up with something, I don't think it's going to be any better than what the national standards are because they're just so solid. And so, but we knew that this was going to be a challenge. And we know this is going to be a challenge in terms of transitioning our, our teachers into teaching students in a three-dimensional kind of way. So we're, we're hoping to make that transition as smooth as possible, but it's, you know, there'll probably be some bumps along the way.
Thank you.
Science curriculum is always so interesting. Good stuff.
Yeah.
And anatomy.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so ten four is the purchase of the materials. And these are, I, I need to emphasize, these are just the text resources. But we did not have a, a set budget like we had back in oh five, oh six, the last time we did this. And yeah, it's been ten years. In oh five, oh six, we actually had a, also a consumable, or excuse me, not consumable, but an equipment purchase budget. We don't have that this year. I think we're sitting pretty good. We might need to use some of our existing normal expenditures to outfit our anatomy and physiology new program. But what you see in that document, there's a spreadsheet, it looks a little confusing. It has a list of the high school science requests, which was a document that I got from, from our, our data team here at TMC, which, which listed who's taking what. And we had to use that really to kind of gauge who's taking what classes next year. And we just basically used that plus a little bit more to, for a little bit of a, a buffer for approximately what we need. You'll also see that some of them, they almost all have a portion of texts and digital and then some digital only. And the reason for this was because the teachers felt like we could be really prudent with school district dollars by only purchasing classroom sets of bound material. And having that as needed within the classroom at the time, but because since we're a one-to-one school district, every student will have access to their own digital piece. So they, so they're going to have that. Every kid has that and every teacher has a set in their classroom. So that is cheaper than giving every kid a textbook. And we're still giving every kid a textbook, it's just some of them are on a computer. So that's kind of the, what you're seeing in terms of the numbers there, based on projections of enrollment. Some courses don't have textbooks, that's why those that are grayed out don't, don't have textbooks that are part of the purchase. And the other one I wanted to point out was AP Physics. Currently, there's only six students who requested that course for next year. I did not recommend purchasing any new text. Well, if we need to, we can use the existing physics texts that we're getting for our regular physics classrooms.
So what is your total document proposal here?
Okay, so there's two proposals. I asked the vendors to give me two sets of numbers. The only one that I did not get in time for this document was the anatomy and physiology at the very bottom. You'll notice they, those two numbers are the same. So there's one column that's an eight-year purchase, then the other's a six-year purchase.
So similar to the K six?
Exactly. Right. Because we knew when we looked at the, at the eight-year purchase, that's fifty-three thousand dollars over budget. What we looked at was for six hundred thousand. And like I said, that was a concerted effort to, to move with the classroom sets of textbook material and the rest digital. And that saved a tremendous amount of money by doing that. Likewise, there was a, one publishing company who was very gracious and said, well, if you, if you do this, then I'll just throw in these microbiology books on top of that. And I said, well, that's a good deal.
Oh.
Yeah, well.
I like microbiology books.
Well, right. And if you look at the environmental and earth, that's a one-for-one pay as well. They, they did the same thing for that. They're only charging us for one book, but they're giving us two. That was because I told them that if you look at the new standards of environmental science, there's so much more earth in there now that we, that normal environmental science resources don't have enough and we need both. They said, okay, we'll throw that in. So I was very pleased with that. And then the follow-up was the six-year, six-year quote. And like I said, the only difference was that anatomy and physiology book doesn't have the six-year quote.
And Wes, these are both budgeted, and again, as a current year expense.
It'll carry over to next year.
This will?
Yeah, because we can't get everything in time by, by the time the year's over. So the budget will carry over to next year.
You'll make the order for this year?
Even by a May twenty-third decision?
I don't believe that we can get everything in time.
If the board is ready to do that.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I'm ready to make it.
Me too.
A second, you know.
I have one question since it's moved and seconded. The digital, is it like the book on the digital?
That's one piece.
It looks like a book on your computer?
It's one piece, yeah.
Because there's not internet access for a lot of our students at home, so.
Correct. Most of these now have the technology by which books, the digital portion is, is in PDF. So there are opportunities where they can download those, those chapters or pages or whatever they need.
And that can get done in the classroom?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, sometimes downloads are slow.
They are. And, and so, and they can do that or screenshots or things like that. But, but that's all a part of it. The other part of that digital piece, and I don't know if you got all the copies of the individual, because there's like sixteen different.
There's a whole bunch of links. You had to sign in and stuff. I didn't have a.
Well, no, the, the individual quotes, they came from multiple companies because I, I give the teachers, the teams, the opportunity to meet with their teams and decide which one best fits with what we did. And, and once they did that, then it kind of, well, we want this and we want this and okay, I'm okay with that, just as long as everybody in your team is okay and they can live with that for at least eight years.
So we're not going to have the same curriculum at every school?
Absolutely, you are.
But you said they could use different, depending on the subject.
I meant my different teams, like I told my biology team, pick the book that fits for biology.
Just for a second, I went offline there.
Okay, board, are we ready to vote on this?
Can I ask, was the motion for the eight years?
Eight years.
This is eight years. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yes. Yeah, motion second.
Motion in a second. Any more discussion? Okay, let's go. Turn your mic on then.
You want to pass?
Yes.
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 Yes. Summer School Breakfast Prize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Did an excellent job.
Yes, he did.
As you know, we've, we're going to be ceasing our universal breakfast at the end of the school year and Bodie would like to serve breakfast at, at summer school. They've done this in the past. They are not over fifty percent free and reduced eligible, so they're not eligible to participate in the summer food service program. So we need to establish a meal price for the paid breakfast at Bodie for the summer school.
And your recommendation was?
A dollar twenty-five. That will cover our food costs and basically we'll get a little bit of reimbursement on them too, so it should, it should work out.
How much was it last year?
Last year it was free.
It was universal.
Because we had the universal.
It was universal.
And we didn't have it before that?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I think it's a good idea for middle school.
I moved that we accept the dollar twenty.
A dollar twenty-five.
Dollar twenty-five for the breakfast at Bodie this summer.
I'll second that. I moved that we accept the dollar twenty-five price for breakfast at Bodie this summer. Yes.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been first and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Consol.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Yes. The Hirsch Scholarship.
Kim Hill's here tonight along with Dr. Haynes to walk us through this.
Hello, Kim.
Look at her piles of information.
Yes, piles. Let's see, I'll put these down there.
We read through every single one of those.
I, I'm happy to walk you through this. And really, it's pretty straightforward and some of you have been through this process before, so I'm really here more to answer questions if you have any. But there are some scholarships that have required within their establishment that, and asks that the St. Joseph School District Board of Education make that selection. And so what we are here tonight to look at the Hirsch and the American Family. And I have, you have in front of you or should have had in, in your board docs, the description of the Hirsch. And it is a scholarship that is based on extreme need. That's really the main requirement for that scholarship, not a lot of other requirements stated. And the student must be attending a four-year college or university. And the committee asks, or the Lori Boyer with Commerce Bank, who's in charge of this, managing this, this scholarship fund, she asks that we select an alternate as well because we did have one year when a student didn't follow, that was selected as a recipient, didn't follow through with enrolling. And so over summer, we were, apparently this was before my time, but they were scrambling to try to figure out, okay, who do we award this scholarship to now? So that's why we have an alternate for that one. And the other scholarship tonight.
Let's just take that.
Do you want to just do this one at a time?
So basically, we'll need a motion in a second by number, not naming the student's name at this time for recipient of the scholarship.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations. Do you want me to read those numbers on there?
It just needs to be.
Eight, nine, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-seven, thirty-six, thirty-eight, fifty-two, with number one being the alternate.
Second.
For the Hirsch scholarship.
And I know we're late, but is this, is this an endowed scholarship?
Yes, this is an endowed scholarship.
Okay. Is it?
As far as the financial piece, I, I am not an expert on that. I could have Lori Boyer here, but I know that, that they tell us how many we can award based on how the funds performed that year. So this year.
For board to select it.
Okay, from the Hirsch. Was there a family by the name of Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay.
And so this is for three thousand dollars a year and they can renew it for four years?
Yes, renewable for four years.
So it's a twelve thousand dollars.
It's a nice scholarship.
So it's a very nice scholarship.
Okay. Motion's on the floor. Been first and seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah, hold on.
Mr. Snead?
I can't figure out how to do this. Look, let me ask you this. The number of the person you got, are they getting other scholarships?
What was the question?
What was the person, what was the number you nominated?
So the question is if these.
Oh, this administration, okay. Do they all, do they all get this?
Yes. The alternate would only receive the scholarship if someone else did not follow through with their plans to enroll.
You had scholarships for, they had scholarships for nine students.
Yes, this year, the funds allowed, according to Lori Boyer at Commerce Bank, that we could, it was always the intent of Mrs. Hirsch to, she wanted it to have it be a significant amount, so she didn't want the money spread over like twenty students. She preferred that it be ten or less. And this year, the funds allowed that we could have nine three thousand dollar scholarships.
Is the poorest, was the poorest kid one of the recipients?
Financial need.
Financial need is the, the first consideration. So you also look at that sometimes as that, what that might mean is. So, you also look at that sometimes as that, what that might mean is students, what other scholarships are they receiving? What scholarships are they potentially going to receive? And this recommendation came from input, with input from all of the high schools, from the Counselor Scholarship, College and Career Advisor, the Scholarship Counselor, and they were instructed to take it to their team within the building and to provide input for their recommendations based on knowing that whole picture of the student's need.
Yeah, and we're really avoiding individual names here as we're selecting.
We always do that.
Chris, Ms. Stanford, you were given those numbers from that team of...
All right, motion on the floor.
Keep scrolling down.
Keep scrolling, thank you.
It's 52 names.
Ms. Consol, call the room.
Yes.
Mrs. Stanford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Dr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Chrisman?
Yes.
Yes. All right, American Family Scholarship.
Okay, the description for the American Family you have in front of you also, and this is for students who rank in the top 25% of their class score at or above the state average on the ACT or the SAT, which is 21 at this time currently, have participated in a variety of activities, school and/or community, demonstrate financial need, and must attend a Missouri school. No private or out-of-state schools are accepted. And in the past, years ago, before my time again, I believe that American Family, even the local American Family donated the funds for this. And at some point, they were no longer able to do that. However, they connected us to national headquarters and each year, I write a grant to apply for our St. Joseph's Schools so that we can receive this money. We never know from year to year whether it will be approved, but it was approved again this year and they've actually already sent us the funds. And so, what we need to do tonight, what I, you have before you the recommendation for the American Family. It should be, it's not on that screen, but it should be coming up. And so, we need to choose, and you have a recommendation before you for one recipient from each of the three high schools to receive a one-time $1,000 scholarship that is non-renewable.
I move that we accept candidates number one, number 10, and number 35 of the American Family Scholarship.
There's a bunch of seconds there, so Brian, was that you?
Second.
You've got somewhere to go.
As presented.
Okay, motion on the floor, first and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Debbie?
Mr. Sneeden?
Yes.
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 I can show you.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Board Policy Update.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. You see the current update to where we're at with the both NEA and MSTA group and working with the committee. It's not completed yet by any means, but we are working hard to see it, see it through. There have been some bumps in the road, but to this point, as you had requested, this is where we're at here of April 25th. And we'll continue to work on it till we are in agreement and bring it back for, really, an AP does not need to be board adopted.
Correct.
So, as we work through this, the committee needs to just get to agreement.
It's just nice to see how it's going.
11.2 and 11.3. Again, this is a work in progress on the update from the staff agreement on the PTO and then applying that language to these two policies. Joe has worked on this primarily. I think there's still some tweaking to do on this, but we'd like to get this back to you by the May 23rd after working again through both MSTA and NEA on it. Trying to reflect again the language from the staff agreement that was brought to you back, I believe, in March. And then Board Policy Committee appointments. I would like to have two board members approved here tonight to work with Debbie and myself and bringing back to the Board as we trying to get the entire Board Policy manual updated. Lori is the only one currently on that committee, but we'd like to have one more. I'd like one more.
One more.
I think Dr. Newhart, the Board, will talk about that and we'll get you your committee for policy. We won't do that tonight. We'll take care of it for you. The Board are appointed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Listed below, you see the future meeting and dates. Again, just a reminder, the St. Joseph's Sports Athlete of the Year Award is selected Wednesday night. It is at Missouri Western. The Tribute to Staff is Thursday night. Then you see the last day of school, high school graduation, et cetera. I'll try to make sure we send out notices, but we do have that Facility Committee Meeting on Wednesday afternoon at 3 o'clock in downtown office. We really need to try to keep that limited to three board members, just alone the perception that it creates if there's four or more. Okay? Who would those three board members be in attendance?
Well, I'm going to be there because I'm on the committee and I think Brian's on the committee too.
I'll, yeah, I'll...
Chris, are you there? You want to be there?
I don't know that I can make it.
So, we have Dr. Green and Ms. Prusman for sure and one other board member.
I would like to attend unless there's somebody else who wants to do that.
Did you say you can't attend it?
I...
Do it.
If you can, why don't you and Cappy?
You can always get somebody else. Yeah, I'll do it if Chris can.
Okay?
Problem solved.
I promise not to show up and be the fourth person unless Chris calls me.
Well, if we have four, somebody just has to turn around and go back home.
That's all I've got for regular session.
All right.